I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's time, it's six oh seven. Acceptance of minutes. Instructional committee meeting, meeting, oh gosh, I'm sorry. Instructional committee meeting of October third, two thousand sixteen, November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, January third, two thousand seventeen, and special instructional committee meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Do you want to start?
I think you have a question.
Oh, yes, sorry.
No, I just want to make it clear that I had corrections on the minutes of November fourteenth and January third, which I have given to Ms. McCullough.
Thank you. Can I get a?
No, just consensus.
Can I get a consensus? Kathy?
Yes, with the changes as noted by Karen.
Yes.
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 And yes.
And yes. Curriculum impossible consensus, proposed adoption of middle school textbook, The Nystrom World Atlas.
Yes, these, this request was actually made in last year's budget process, so I don't expect you to remember that. But when we had put in the curriculum budget for textbooks for this year, this was one of the ones that we were going to be investigating, the textbook that the teachers would want to purchase based on their research over the summer and early fall. So what we're bringing here to this evening is the Nystrom Education Edition number five, two thousand fifteen edition. And we were looking to have this for grade six and seven at the middle, at both middle schools. So this would be at DAG and Moran. And we're looking to purchase two hundred and forty copies, so it wouldn't be a copy per student. It would be in classes, as classroom sets, for students. If they needed to take it home, they could, but it wouldn't be one per student.
Karen?
It's my understanding that there is an issue with the pages staying in place. Is there a way that we can reinforce the pages in some way?
I can check on that. I'm not certain as to how that would be done.
What do you mean, staying in place?
I don't know, but I'm looking at a weakness. Pages fell out after lost use, so I'm just wondering if there's some way we could, I don't know, laminate or?
I'm not certain.
I'm not familiar with the atlas itself, but I thought, you know, if there's some way we can make them last longer.
Exactly, we could look at the pages that are falling. Excuse me?
Would that be a process where they, if they rebind them?
They could be rebounded, and we do rebind some books over the summer, because it is much more efficient financially especially to rebind some books, especially if they go out of print, and some books do, and they're still valuable to our teachers. Ms. Costelli, before the meeting, brought to my attention that there might be a better opportunity financially to pursue purchase of the book through online resource, for example, like Barnes and Noble. So I'm going to investigate that and see if we can do that, because it seems like it could be a substantial financial savings, which would be helpful to us.
Oh, so I just had two questions. Are we paying extra for the online resources, or is it included with the purchase this way? And if you're looking into that, can we make sure that if it's included with this purchase at this price, that it's also included?
Correct, that's a very, you know what, that's a very, very good point, because often going through the publisher, you do get the online resources. I'm not certain that you would going through a second-party vendor, so we'd want to check that. So I appreciate that. Yes, but this does include the online resources, there's no additional expenditure for that.
And then my second question was, I noticed the copyright date was two thousand fifteen, but as you roll down to the item six, it says there's a more recent updated version, which is part of the online package for a two thousand sixteen copyright. So I'm just worried that if we purchase, if you look at item six, or number six, on page two, if we purchase this, then all of a sudden they're going to print a two thousand sixteen copyrighted version.
I believe that the way, and I will get clarification, if I'm incorrect on my understanding, I'll let you know directly. But I believe what this means is that the online version is the up-to-date version, and they keep updating the online version, but they have stopped with the two thousand fifteen publishing. That's what most of the companies are doing now, is they kind of reach a point, unless it's a full-scale new edition, they'll stop with the print copy, and they'll only update the online version.
Okay.
But I will verify that, and if it's, if my understanding is incorrect, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no worries.
I have the same questions as Shwana, so you nailed them.
Are there any additional questions? Do you need us to take consensus on?
Yes, please.
Can we take consensus on looking into the, what is it, the secondary?
Well, no, it'd be the adoption of the textbook.
The adoption.
It'd be adopting it.
All right, consensus on adopting the Nystrom World Atlas?
Yes.
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 And yes. Policy impossible consensus, propose adoption of revised policy six one four six, graduation requirements, standards of mastery.
We are going to continue to come back to the graduation policy probably for the next, I don't know, five years, for all I know. This continually changes each year due to the fact that there have been significant changes in the requirements for graduation based on the state of Connecticut and the assessment. As you all know, initially, the S-BAC was being given to all eleventh-grade students. That was going to be the graduation requirement. We all had a rush to come up with what our plan was. That's what this initial policy represents, which was the plan prior to the revisions that you're seeing this evening, was to incorporate smarter balance assessment into the eleventh-grade graduation requirement. Since then, we all know that the state of Connecticut requested a waiver and was granted a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education to utilize SAT as the standardized measure in eleventh grade. So we needed to first reflect the SAT, but then also, we need to have our policy address the fact that we needed to look at a new way of assessing students who do not meet mastery or do not meet the goal on the new assessments. So what we looked at, and what we had shared a little bit last year, was the fact that we were going to move towards a portfolio-based system. In the past, we've had assessments that have been rigorous in their nature, but they have been somewhat challenging to our students, number one, but also our staff in the sense that we kept reassessing students in the same way, expecting a different result. And we all know that that is Einstein's definition of insanity. So the fact is that what we, what the staff and the teachers coming together, department heads getting feedback from all the departments, realized that the portfolio process would be a better way to go. So what you have in six one four six, first of all, is just a clarification or a cleaning up the language of removing a student who presents written documentation from a doctor stating that participation in physical education is not advisable, shall be excused from physical education requirement. However, another subject must be submitted. That's no longer a viable option, so that's why that's being taken out of that. And then on the back page of the policy, it just says that "for students who have not successfully completed the assessment and/or portfolio criteria to reach a satisfactory level of competency." So we wanted to include the and/or. There is still going to be an assessment for science, but the other areas will be more of a portfolio approach. And just for everyone's information, the science assessment will continue for tenth grade this year, and then it'll sunset. And then there'll be a new science assessment that'll come out in the eleventh grade, most likely for the spring of two thousand nineteen. That's when we'll get recharged, and then most likely those first-year scores will not be factored in, so it'll be the second year in two thousand twenty. So that's what we're hearing for science.
So will the students that took it in tenth grade have to take it again in eleventh, or are they going to be?
No, I don't believe so. There's, I don't believe they're going to do a double testing. I think they're going to actually, that's where this policy, there's always going to be some flux to this. So yeah, at this time, they're not looking to double test. Because similarly would have been the case with S-BAC and tenth graders who took CAPT. And so they had done that, so they didn't have to double test.
And one other question regarding the SAT now being our?
Graduation, the eleventh grade graduation.
So are kids, is everyone required to take that now?
We all administer it during school, during school hours to every student.
We're paying for that now, right? The kids don't have to pay?
The state, the state pays for it.
The state's paying for it, okay.
It's, it take, it took the place of the cost of S-BAC.
Thanks.
And students receive accommodations on SAT as if they would on S-BAC. So that's why oftentimes, students who do receive accommodations, those scores don't necessarily travel to colleges and universities, because they've been given under a less-than-standard administration environment.
Yeah, I just have a question about that physical education, that we're striking the notion of a student who presents a written documentation from a doctor. So I don't know how to interpret that. Does that mean there, is that you don't require the doctor's note, or there is no option to opt out?
There's option under different policies, under five oh four. If it's an extenuating circumstance, it might be under an IEP. But just for, what they're, what we're trying to do is clean it up and put it in the right category.
Okay.
So the option could, for example, if a student has an injury that occurs during that period of time when physical education is occurring, they're going to be relieved from that responsibility. They are going to, if at all possible, be required to take the course at a different time.
Okay.
Not just take another course, which this suggests that they could substitute it.
Right.
But if it's a long-term disability, if it's something that, you know, a plan has to be put in place for, then of course, that plan would supersede anything.
That would, that would articulate what's the alternate plan.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was a little ambiguous to me, like, trying to figure out what that means.
Understandable, and I think the whole idea is just to put those particular modifications for students.
Put them in the right buckets, yeah, yeah.
Put them in the right bucket.
I understand, thank you.
Because they're protected.
Yeah, right.
But this policy did not, whereas, it didn't put it in the right place.
It was not appropriate, gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
No, no worries.
Any other questions? Can I get a consensus on the adoption of revised policy six one six, graduation requirements, standards of mastery?
Yes.
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 And yes. B, proposed adoption of revised regulation six one four six A, graduation requirements, standards of mastery.
And this, again, just ties into the, a couple of things. First of all, if you look at the first section, demonstration of performance standards, acceptance means, acceptable means of demonstrating performance standards. It says, number one, achieving at or above the proficient level, three. The state has identified three. When we first, when S-BAC initially came out, they said it was up to the district to determine. And so that's why all the districts in the area, we, I think if you recall, we pooled everybody together, and we all decided we're going to go with a two. Said nobody felt that they were too high, too low. We all were starting off with a two, but the state has told us that it has to be a three on the state assessment. And that's for the math and the English language arts. And so you'll see that that was a change. And then, or, they'll have to satisfactory completion of the district's assessment and/or portfolio. And again, we left assessment, because most likely we'll continue to do some form of assessment with science, but then the portfolio for the math and the English language arts. The next paragraph, we cleaned up a little bit, because we wanted to clarify how these portfolios were going to be reviewed and make sure that there was fidelity to the process. So there will be teachers who will be working in collaboration with the curriculum office. The teachers will review the work, and then the curriculum office will make the final review. I did receive a question, and I think that it was a valid question. You know, why is the curriculum office the final gatekeeper? It's not that we don't respect the teachers, but oftentimes, if this is a difficult decision in terms of a child's graduation, we don't want to put a teacher in a position to be the one making that final decision. We'll definitely share with the parent that the teachers were part of the process. We'll actually probably use their scoring of the portfolio to share with the parent. But we would want to put that final decision in the hands of, most likely, the assistant superintendent for curriculum and the curriculum coordinators in that group. But the main work will be done at the teacher level. And also, there's, we didn't put in here specifically, but of course, the department heads are part of that team. And that, we, we wanted that as an understanding. Again, a lot of the language is cleaned up for mathematics and science, as I talked about earlier. The level three, again, goes back to the state requirement, which you'll see on the next couple of pages. And those are the substantive changes in that area.
So, so this, there's no change here, but could we just talk a little bit about the transferring from other districts and the requirements, which can almost appear to be with less rigor here for students coming in, in their fourth year to us?
Sure, which section are you specifically looking at?
Section three, exception for transfers from other districts.
Okay. So I'll read it for everyone who might be watching. Part A, if a student transfers into Wallingford Public Schools after completing at least three years in a high school in a district which requires fewer than twenty-six credits for graduation, and if the student has a minimum of eighteen credits to transfer, the student will be eligible to receive a Wallingford Public Schools diploma based on the graduation credit requirements of the previous district, provided that the student earns at least eight credits in Wallingford. Such student will be exempted from Wallingford's performance standards requirement for graduation. That's part A. And then B, the superintendent shall be authorized to grant other exceptions to the graduation requirements for students transferring into the district during the junior year if unusual extenuating circumstances would be, would make it impossible for the student to graduate with his or her class.
So when we say that the student will be exempted from Wallingford's performance standards, does that include things such as our requirement for community service? Is that one?
No, that's a graduation requirement. Performance standards means, in reference to these tests, because if the student is coming in as a junior, past the point of the test being already given, we don't have any assessments to give them. We don't have this data assessment.
Okay, that clears it up a little bit, I was a little confused.
So the thing is, yeah, because they're still required the twenty-eight, twenty-six credits, because they're, because they're coming in with eighteen, they still have to take eight credits, so that makes them the twenty-six. It's just the assessment piece, because they'll have, they'll have already passed the point.
Yep.
The question that would come up, and again, because we have to do a standard administration of the SAT, and what our reports on those assessments, while the scores come back, it's a little bit different in terms of how it would be for the general administration. That could be an area that we could look at the SAT, but we won't have the other assessments. We wouldn't have a science assessment.
Okay, so how then are we going to know that this, just based on the transcripts that have come to us?
It's going to be a transcript analysis, which the guidance counselors do all the time.
Okay, thanks. On the Educational Center for the Arts Program, it indicates that a student may earn two credits towards graduation per year for a, I'm assuming if they start in their freshman year, it can be eight credits?
Yes, they do start in their freshman year.
So where are those allocated?
Those are in their elective courses, so those would be the arts classes, like band, chorus, art. Those are those areas.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a consensus on the proposed adoption, or the adoption of revised regulation six one four six A, graduation requirements, standards of mastery?
Yes.
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 And yes. Shall we take a brief recess until our presenter arrives?
I think that would be a fine idea.
So let me start with, I guess I'll start in the beginning. So we've endeavored, we've endeavored on a new strategic plan. Only our facilitator, who came from far and wide, from the state of Montana, said, "We don't call strategic planning strategic planning, we call it design planning." So we had a large group from ACES, there were about thirty-two people on the team, and we want to get a good cross-section of people from inside the agency and outside the agency. So she said, "Go get about twenty-five people from, with that background, and we'll work through several different things." So she had come to ACES initially back last April and had kind of got the lay of the land after talking with administrators on how we perceive ourselves and that, that sort of thing. And she said, "You think of yourselves as a school district." And I said, "Well, what's?" She said it in a negative way, and I said, "Well, what's the problem with that?" And she said, "You're not a school district. Remember that you're a regional education service center." So ACES is one of the six regional education service centers, as you probably know. Were created under Connecticut General Statute ten dash sixty-six. And our real design is really to help school districts find economies of scale with specialized services that maybe a smaller school district can't or won't do by itself. But it's about us collaborating with districts and working with different groups to make sure that we deliver on things that any school district can't or won't do all by itself. So our history for ACES, as you know, probably goes back to our foundation, which is around special ed services. We're about forty-eight years old, almost as old as me. I have more gray hair than the agency has, but the, the design of the, the design plan is really to address needs of the next generation. So Susan Lettich was our facilitator. She had been recommended by Peter Young, the original education executive director at ACES. And she has done work at RESTs throughout the country. So every state in the Union has some variation of a REST. They don't, may not call it a REST, but they all have them. And they're pretty much designed to be not-for-profit, fee-for-service agencies that might do everything from textbook development, like they do in the state of Texas. We don't get involved in that. We're, of all the RESTs, we're heavily involved in special ed schools and in three magnet schools. Krec is one of our sister RESTs, and they have a wider array of magnet schools. But we also provide a variety of different services. So when she, she got us together, we went through some growing pains. She was with us for about eight months. She'll come back next November to see how we did in our first year. But basically, the design plan falls under four different functions. One is the context in which we work, which has to do with the economics, the time and the place for education in Connecticut in general. Another has to do with the function of our work, the structure of our work, and the process of our work. And I'll go through each one of those. So when you look at the, the context of education in Connecticut, we have a variety of different stressors, just like any local school district does. It has to do with trends in politics, it has to do with economics, it has to do with demographics. So some samples of what we see is, for example, a national trend is to move into the STEM STEAM focus, so that there's K to twenty-one education. And the idea there is that students have a well-articulated curriculum that's going to enable to get them higher-paying jobs and be a better participant and citizen in the, in the culture in which, or community in which they work. In the economic climate, just like your school district, we face state budget cuts. In our magnet schools, for example, this year, we had a six percent reduction this year. We're expected to get another six percent next year. I readily await the governor's proposed budget on Wednesday at noon. We'll see what is going to unfold with that. But it does get pretty dicey when you look at funding for magnet schools. Like I said before, we're a fee-for-service, not-for-profit's agency. So one of my goals is to make sure whatever services we sell, we want Sal Menzo to buy it. Sal Menzo might buy it if it's going to be high-quality service, and it's going to be a low cost or a cost that fits within your budget. So I'm well aware of that, and the need for all superintendents and business managers to work through that. When the context was done, the national political scene was unknown. This was last year, earlier in the year, so we didn't know what was going to happen. We did know that NCLB had been tossed aside and that the ESSA was going to be the new structure for federal government. In local and state trends, we notice a declining population for students across the state, especially in rural or suburban districts, and an influx of students, some of them immigrant students, into larger cities. So some of the larger cities are facing new students. I believe the only town that does face an increase with more students is Rocky Hill. That kind of is an aberration from the norm. But the other differences we notice is it's more of an immigrant population, and there's greater stress on urban areas to meet the needs of students with, you know, language acquisition and that, that sort of thing. We also see a greater schism between wealthy and families in poverty. And then the impact of that into such thing is technology. So you have families with, students with technology, readily accessible, and then you have families without access. And what does that mean going down the line? So these were the context of things with, which, in which we work. We also notice, so our role is to support local school districts, but sometimes we compete with local school districts. It's not an intended competition, but what happens, especially with some students in special ed programs, they may be held in district, because the district will go out on its own and develop a wonderful program in-house. And we notice a decline in special ed populations in some of our, like Village School, for example, from some towns that have developed in-house programming. What normally happens, though, is the child ages up, and let's say diapering is an issue, or behavior is an issue. As the needs become greater, there's a more, greater likelihood that that student will then be educated in, in one of the ACES special ed schools. So the context of education is, at one point, it's, it's interesting. It's kind of titillating, and in some ways, it could create anxiety and nausea for anybody who's living in this world. So then we took the context, and this is where things got very interesting within the agency. So we have, like I said, an agency that's forty-eight years old, and some of the employees may be there, maybe not forty-eight years, but maybe they've been there for some time. So some of these things, the subjects we talked about, were a little delicate for them to read, to read through this and review it. What we found is, we want to be an agency in the new design plan that lives in the green, so we want to be a transparent agency. We want to have integration of agency resources. We want to be nimble and rapid in responding, so when Sal Menzo calls and says, "Can ACES do this?", we need to be able to say, "Yes, we can," or "No, we can't, and here's why." But we need to be able to articulate a response pretty quickly. We also are looking for integrated solutions. So that's where we want to live. The two blocks to that, we found, were fixed mindsets within the organization, meaning when they get the question, "Can we do this?", "No, we don't do that at ACES, we've never done that. We've never done it that way, we've always done it this way." So that serves as a block and a barrier to really creating more improvement for the agency as a whole. The other part of our work has to do with working in silos. So ACES is a large organization. Our annual budget is about eighty-four million dollars. There's nine hundred and forty-four employees, and there are a variety of different schools and programs and services that we need to attend to. So in our budget process, just to show you how the silos work, each of the program directors or principals will come forward with what he or she needs for their particular service or school. And oftentimes, they're only looking at it through the lens in which they live. What are the lens would they be working with? So our work in the agency is to give them a wider lens to see how they fit and their service fits into the agency as a whole. So Susan said, after we came to grips with this, Susan said, "There's these, there's connections," and you can see all kinds of arrows. It took me about fifty-two times to come to grips with this, but you can see how one thing affects another thing in either a positive or negative way. But the goal for our agency is to live in the green there. So then she said, "Okay." After we went through, it was a bit of a therapy session for us. After we went through that, she said, "Okay, now, we want to find out from the community, inside the agency, outside of the agency, the answer to the question, if you could have what you want from the next generation of ACES, what is it that you would want?" So from that, we did sixteen different focus groups. It took about six weeks to run through this, but we did sixteen different focus groups, got eleven hundred and twenty-seven responses to that question. And then we broke the questions into three components. The content of our work, the process of the work, and the structure of the work. So when that was all done, we brought this back to the team of thirty-two and broke into different groups, and we were looking for recurring themes that we saw emerge. One of the things that came up, for example, was, there were several different responses that ACES should create an alternative high school setting. It came from superintendents, it came from a former executive director, it came from a teacher, it came from a parent, and I know for a fact that those four people did not know each other. They were all new and different to the scene, but they all came up with the same response. So we came up with these nine different, nine different themes. So the first theme had to do with us being agile. Like I said before, if superintendent calls, we need to give them a response. Yes, we could do it, we could transport the student, or we can't, but we need to be pretty quick in doing that. The other thing is that in our agility, we're able to allocate resources in a way that's going to be responsive to present needs. So that's one of the themes that came up. We shouldn't be, you know, stewing about an idea for too long. We should be pretty quick to come up with some scheme or plan to devote resources for a particular area. Another theme that came up is that we enhance and expand our core business. So our core business in direct services students has to do mainly with special ed students, but magnet school students too, and that we enhance and expand that work. So one of the things that happens, has happened around the state. If you remember the name Katie School, or Warehouse Point, or Long Lane School, some of those programs that the state used to run, the state doesn't fund anymore. Well, what's happened is that those students have wound up in the local school district, and those students may need some very specialized services, usually around behavior. So what happens is the child goes to the local high school, local middle school, some crisis event happens, and then all of a sudden, the child needs a placement or gets expelled and needs some sort of alternative services than what's provided. Our work there? Our work there is, if you took a program like Mill Road School, Mill Road School is a K to 8 school for students with emotional disabilities. The staff there, many of them have been with us for a good, long number of years. And they recognize the behaviors that they had been seeing, but now they're seeing behaviors that are just up, more of a critical crisis point than they used to be. Because the students they serve are different from what they used to see. So what does ACES do about that? If the students' needs have changed, let's say 10%, 15%, 20%, do we need some other programming to create a cohort for students? Let's say, if students have psychiatric needs or some other services around behavior, do we create a specialized program that's going to be a little different, a little more involved than what we've had before? So that would be about expanding or enhancing the core work that we have, just an example. Another one is that we intentionally develop innovative products and services. What's happened over the years at ACES is that we've often fell into things because there was a need out there. We've fallen into them. The key word that should be emboldened there and isn't is intentionally. But we need to be keen on looking up market research, finding out what districts need before we delve into allocating resources and supplies and services for school districts. We need to do market research and find out what the true needs are. And if there are true needs, then what are the services that would be required to meet that district's needs? Next one is, so I said we had 944 employees, that we recognize how critical those staff members are. And we create some sort of recognition for them and professional development so that they're better able to handle needs that have maybe changed over the years. They may be used to handling students in a certain way. What are some things we can provide with professional development to kind of get them into the next step of their work? Another theme that emerged is that we have a clear and consistent, effective work process. Some of that has to do with contract development. So I don't think your business services director is here. No? Okay. So I'll bet that your business services director gets a variety of different bills for services from ACES on unknown dates and expected timelines. So for example, your electric bill comes, let's say, comes the 15th of the month. You know you're going to expect your electric bill the 15th of the month. Well, at ACES, we're in so many different things. We're like an octopus. We don't have eight tentacles. We have 52 tentacles. So maybe your business manager gets a magnet school bill in November. Maybe they get a special ed bill from each of the different schools, four different weeks during a month. There's no rhyme or reason to which we do that. So we need, one of our charges is to get our act together and make sure that we're billing things in a timely fashion and when people can expect it. There's nothing worse, when you go to a restaurant, you don't get four different bills. You get one bill and it has your entree and your dessert and, you know, appetizers and so forth. That we have systems in place for that. Next up has to do with a system to manage knowledge. So that's about knowing what are our shortage areas, not just within ACES, but for our districts as a whole. So we know that OTs are hard to find, PTs are hard to find, speech and language therapists are hard to find, minority teachers are difficult to find. So what do we do internally in our agency and externally for our school districts to provide career ladders and opportunities for existing staff members, maybe to go get certified in a different area than what they're certified in presently? But it's about creating a knowledge management structure for that. Then we get into, number seven is both exciting, but I really dislike it. And I dislike it because it's about six verbs in there and I feel responsible for each of those verbs. But we have a clearly defined internal system to research, design, redesign, promote, deliver, evaluate new and expanded services. So that we have some sort of quality insurance about what we're putting out there. And we recognize what research is there telling us that you need to go into this line of work. One of our more recent lines of work has to do with behavior services. And that's about BCBAs and behavior therapists and that sort of thing. It's really grown a lot. It may have reached its crescendo because more schools, universities are supplying the pipeline for BCBAs. So maybe we need to ease out of that work over time, maybe over the next decade. But it's about knowing what the research and data is showing, when to get into a market, when to get out of a market. And then next up has to do with internal and external communication process. And that's about prizing our employees and community members in different districts out there. What's happening at ACES? What does this new next generation look like? And then finally, and this was a astounding theme from the superintendents because they all asked the answer to that question too. What is it you want from the next generation of ACES? And that's a regional voice with the legislature, before the legislature creates a wonderful law. And the legislature does create wonderful laws. Oftentimes, though, the rollout isn't so good. So if you think to the privacy with student information, it's not a good idea that a school district would lose student information or allow a company that they're working with to sell it. That's not a good thing. What happened when they rolled out that law is that districts were expected to create a contract with each of their software providers in about two or three months, between the end of the legislative season and October 1st. And it's virtually impractical to have a school district do that. I don't know about Wallingford, but ACES has about 220 different software programs. So we'd have to create an agreement with each of those software companies and just the rollout for that isn't too feasible. But there you get into the nine themes. So from there, she said, okay, you have nine themes. These are nine goals for your next five to 10 years. What are some five or six bold steps that you can take in calendar year 2017? This was adopted by the board back in the November meeting. What are six things that you can do right off the bat to, you know, comply with people's wishes about what they're hoping for from ACES? So off in the horizon, we need systems and processes, new services, agility, regional voice, communication, and recognized staff. But the immediate things are on the ladder there, and it has to do with advocating for magnet school funding. So this year, we had a 6% cut. We're expected to get another 6% cut next year, which doesn't look well and looking forward to Wednesday afternoon, or maybe I'm not. Another thing that we work on is implementing an internal communication process. So with all of our employees working in silos, how does one employee know about other services that we provide? Because they're all working out in school districts or they're working in our schools. And when people ask them about different dimensions of ACES, do they have enough information to answer the question intelligently about what are the services that we provide? Another has to do with developing a comprehensive system for employee development, recognition, and voice. What's the process internally that involves students and their own, employees in their own professional development so they can take on new challenges and that they find the work meaningful and well-regarded within the agency? Then we have developing a consistent referral billing and contract process. Some of the districts that we work in, the larger ones, New Haven and Waterbury, have their own way of contracting. And we need to be cognizant of that to meet the guidelines that their attorneys are coming up with. But we need some sort of regular template language in all of our contracts in developing that. And back to the timeline on billing so that our local directors of business services know when to expect the bill. We're timely in that process. And then one of the exciting things is developing and testing three new lines of revenue generating work. I'd like to add to that, that it's not just about revenue generating work, but it also provides savings. So we're working on an initiative, so far, knock on wood. We have six other districts that are willing to go into an insurance collaborative. I know that's exciting for you, Kathy. But it's an insurance collaborative and what it will do, we have 602 members, ACES employees, who take health insurance. But this larger group will give us a greater body of 3,444 that we can negotiate with, you know, physicians and different agencies that provide health services to get a better rate on services and kind of pool our resources around that. So that's in the offing. And then last-
Revenue generator, or is that a saving?
It's a cost avoidance and savings.
Right. That's not really a revenue generator, though, is it?
Yeah, no, it's not a revenue generator. But it is, our health insurance is about nine or 10 million on any given year. So we've just moved to self-insurance. That's a requirement to be a part of that collaborative, but it is a way to realize-
So do you have three new lines of revenue generating?
Yes. One of them, one of them that we're working on is an international student program. And that's for students to come to both summer school at Educational Center for the Arts, summer school, and/or semester or year-long programming. So it would work similar to a boarding school. There would be home stays. A family would take a student. We're working with China. A student would come for the semester of the year, pay a higher rate like they would in boarding school. We put them up with a family and give the family a stipend. Then they'd come in the morning for English, math, science, social studies and be involved in the ECA curriculum in the afternoon. But that would be a new revenue generator. The idea there is that the income replaces some of the income we're losing from the state magnet schools.
I get the idea. So do you have three specific ones, or is that still in?
We have things on the line, but nothing, nothing that I can articulate to you or get the community excited about trying to sell something. But it is about that. It's about new sources of revenue. And then the last but not least is about establishing platforms, leaders, functions, and processes. So on the platforms, we have, in the agency, we have, most of this work is being done now. For example, in shared services, that's about fiscal support and human resources support. We have a director of HR, we have a director of fiscal services. That provides accounting and payroll and technology services, food services, so that's established. The new platform, what has to do with ACES Institute, so we do have a director of talent management. That work would be expanded to include partnership management, grant writing, program development, as well as talent development. And that, knowing about shortage areas, what's the best way to create a partnership with the local universities to help to get employees certified in different areas? Our facilitator suggested that we keep schools, ACES schools, as a separate platform because we have the five special ed schools and three magnet schools. We keep that separate. And then over here in market services, market services are all the different services at ACES that school districts buy. It could be extension therapy, whether that's occupational therapy or physical therapy. Could be around behavior services. Might have to do with international programming or construction, facilities management, all the services that we provide, professional development, early childhood, and that sort of thing. We also have an access program, and that's for clients who are 21 and older. They actually, I think our oldest client there is 74 years old, been with us for a good, long time. These are folks who are intellectually disabled or maybe physically disabled. We set them up with a job coach and they go out and work in various different businesses in the area. And then the last but not least is marketing and outreach. And that has to do with public relations and a vehicle to take information from external communities into ACES and discern, okay, so what do we do with that information? Is it a request for some new work? Is it a request for different work? How do we vet whatever information that is? As well as provide advocacy with the legislature on laws before they're established. Providing support within between governments, with businesses. We have a very strong program for our schools, such as Whitney North, coupled with the access program. We also have students working in a manufacturing center at Whitney East, so they're given paid jobs. It's part grant-funded, but the students will put together, working with batteries, they'll put together packages for new mothers with Columbia Presbyterian. So it's about putting our students to work in areas that they're capable of working in, given their limitations. All of those different platforms will be part of the Executive Leadership Council, the cabinet, and that's where we'll discern different ideas. The enterprise fund would allow for startup funds and resources to get new lines of work going. Are there any questions with that?
Well, I have questions, but I-
Yes.
Well, I had a general question. When you were explaining the next generation of what ACES will be doing. So you talked a little bit about providing innovative products and services and expanding your services. Can you give me any examples? Like, what are you looking at? What would be an example of an innovative product or service, perhaps?
For example, the international programming. So what does a student who goes to ECA from Wallingford get out of that? Perhaps it's an opportunity for exposure with students with other cultures. I know you do a lot of work in that. NCL does a lot of work in that.
Right.
But that would be an example. Another line of work would be, we're looking at a program to enhance for students who have really acute emotional disability needs. How do we take our existing program at Mill Road and Whitney High North and enhance it? We're finding that districts run into issues, have more issues now with students who may have very high academic functioning, but their social-emotional state is so tender that they may be suicidal. So what sort of program can we put together that's going to provide the social-emotional support for that child as well as the academic component in an appropriate way, given the age level and where the child is? But it would be about taking existing services and kind of melding it to a new or different need.
So do you have timelines for, I mean, you're talking about, what I'm hearing is how to enhance your programming on every level and also your internal delivery network and, you know, just everything you're looking to- So do you, and maybe it's part, you know, I'm jumping the gun, in terms of what your timelines are.
So-
And if I am, I can wait. You don't need to jump ahead of your presentation. I can certainly wait.
So if we go back to these six bold steps, these are the steps for 2017.
Okay.
So what will happen is the design team is going to reconvene, October, November, around that timeframe. What have we done with these six things in calendar year 2017? Do we need to keep some of them in the hopper because they're not quite done yet? Or can we take some of them off? And what other theme can we put on there for 2018? So it's really a constant, it's an iterative process year to year. What did we do? What's new and different? Can we take that off the list, or do we need to leave it on? What else can we add to the list?
So these are all for 2017?
Yeah, this is just 2017.
So do you have, because I guess the question that I'm interested in is that if there is a parent who's watching this or somebody who's watching this, and they want to see, for example, what your action steps are-
Right. That's what I feel like I'm missing.
And then the timeline, a Gantt chart, basically.
Yeah.
What is your action step, what are the responsibilities, what's your accountability or matrix for-
Right. So that's where design plan is a little different from strategic planning. Strategic planning would have the matrix with, you know, who's doing what by, you know, what timeline. This is a little looser than that, but the guidelines are still there. We have to show growth. So how much, what was our revenue from one of the three new lines of work? Or what's the yield in developing-
Right, it may not be revenue, but it could be-
Insurance collaborative, what's the savings?
Going back to one of your initial ideas of transparency, what is, if I, again, I'm a consumer of ACES. You are a consumer of ACES. Where do I go and see this loose design process documented?
So the communication vehicle is both through the website, through different media-
So is there-
To get it out to- To get it out to different constituents. So part of the work is, we're in the interview process right now with the marketing and outreach. That will be part of that job, to communicate with different constituents. So we don't have that platform yet. We actually just finished interviews in the first go-around Friday. We have another set of interviews this Friday. That's a new position. It's a combination of marketing, the old marketing and public relations.
I get you.
It'll be marketing and outreach. Right.
So it's really not a new, it's just a new creation of-
It's similar-
It was existing, but you just came up with it.
It's got, I guess in the job description, other duties is assigned by the executive director. There's a long list of those. It's one of those.
I get. If you just want to go backwards, I think-
Well, actually, I wanted to show you what specifics. So Wallingford, I get this from the annual report. I looked through the annual report. On what services does ACES provide to Wallingford locally? So it's special ed schools. In the special ed schools, there are 19 students who attend different special ed schools at ACES. For Wintergreen, there are 51 students. And for Thomas Edison, you have 15 students. And Educational Center for the Arts has 12 students. So you really have 97 students altogether, which is pretty big.
Could you explain access? I didn't know that exists. Is it like a fairer?
Yes. So access is- So access is, um, I believe it started in the late seventies, could have been the early eighties. We have 112 clients who have intellectual disabilities or physical disabilities. We have a day support option. So what's happened with the, with the folks who have been there for so long, they're ready to retire. Some of them are tired because they've been out working different jobs in various different places for so long. So we have a day support option. So that has a variety of services to work to improve the, the client's quality of life in looking at things differently. There may be a smaller work component of it. If the person isn't in the day support option, he or she is out working in a variety of different places, so.
You place these?
Yeah, we place them, um, we actually have a, one of the things I love about ACES, every October, we have this great celebration. It's the Business Advisory Council Dinner. It's attended by about 300 different businesses and clients who work in those businesses. It might be Hudson News, so the folks might be loading magazines at the train station, might be Bagalicious, it might be Town Fair Tire, um, might be L'Oréal, um, working in packaging and promoting, um, delivery of those different items. We also have contracts, like I said, with Columbia Presbyterian to do maternity baskets for new mothers. They work on an assembly line, um, packaging batteries. So it's a, they'll work, we get a grant from the state. It's all based on their attendance, and their attendance, for the most part, is very good. Actually, they, their attendance, the state requires them to work all the time. I think there are 12 holidays and that's it for the year. But they'll work in an age appropriate, not an age, an ability appropriate manner. So we don't put somebody in a job that's going to be overwhelming, we put them in an appropriate job for their, um, for their, you know, personal needs. But we provide the job coach, we provide transportation. So what happens is they'll get transportation, some of them are in homes, they'll get transportation to Access. Access is in North Haven on United Drive. From there, each day they'll be deployed, they'll work in, uh, gyms, cleaning equipment, that's, that sort of thing. They'll have a job coach, and then they'll work with the coach if they're able to work more independently, maybe the coach isn't there all day, maybe the coach just checks in twice a week, it depends, each one is, is pretty different.
There's 112 of them.
Yeah.
Do you have enough placement for them?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, um, it's a pretty active, it's an active place. I, I consider it similar to a school because, because the folks who are in charge of that program, things might happen with the youngsters that might, not youngsters, the clients that might happen in school, and it's very similar in that. What's great to hear though, from different businesses out in the community, is that when the clients come to that work site, the folks who work in that business love to have them because they say it changes the culture and climate of the workplace in a positive way. So it's really, if you come to the dinner, it's really a nice way to, to show tribute to that.
Does anybody go there with a, with a, it's not just, doesn't originate with children who go to ACES and then they go to one?
Yeah, oftentimes in the transition meeting with PPTs from Whitney East, they'll often transition to that, but we take, we have an intake process. State has guidelines. There'll be an intake processing, a person to process that, and they do a, um, kind of cognitive evaluation on the individual to see what the strengths and challenges are and then find the appropriate placement. But it's a nice, it's a nice program. I can get you more information if you, if you'd like.
I have another question. So you're indicating that this is a state-granted, um, program. What about, for, for DSO options, a lot of clients are funded through DDS, is that?
That's where we get our funding.
Okay, that's, because that wasn't clear to me.
So we're the, we're actually the only rest that does that. We're also the only rest that doesn't do birth to three work, which we might, that might be a new line of work for us.
There you go. There you go.
Something new, right? Yes.
So, so just, um, what portion of your budget is, or your, your income is through grants and state funding, and what portion is through tuition paid by school districts or other clients?
So about 74% of our budget, 84 million, is the local LEA. So that's the Wallingford. We have, we service 25 towns from Branford to Milford to Nogatuck and Wocud, over to Middletown and Middlefield Durham, that area. So then 24% had been coming from the state. Now the state's not coming forth so much, so this is where we need to get really creative on how do we replace the lost income from, let's say, magnet funding? So when you look at the, the budget overall, we've run a surplus, so this is good news and bad news. I don't like us to run a surplus because if we're running a surplus, I worry that we're overcharging, which I don't think we are necessarily, but we can argue about that. I don't, I want to make sure we're a fee-for-service, not-for-profit agency. So not-for-profit, to me, means that every year we, we ought to break even, right? But in 80, 84 million dollars of work, oftentimes we'll have a surplus in one line of work. For example, transportation runs a surplus every year, magnet schools run a deficit every year. But when you look at the totality of our budget, when you get down to the bottom line, oftentimes we can supplement benevolent work around social justice and that sort of thing to help communities and help people in need, that's what we're all about, as long as we have enough surplus in another line of work to support that work. And now that the state, you ask, you know, what's the state portion? It's been about 24%, and that's dwindling year to year. Hopefully it doesn't continue to dwindle, but it doesn't look good. So then what does ACES do to make sure that it sustains itself and its good works so that we're able to fund different programs that meet people's needs?
Just one more question. Is your budget like an open document to the public? Like is there some way we can see that as participating?
Sure. What I could do is send you the annual report. I actually, I sent it to Sal online, so if you, you can see it online, I also have a hard copy if you prefer that.
Well, I mean, and just not just for me as a board of education member, but a lot of, or a lot of money from our taxpayers does go to you guys, and so just a normal, somebody who's not on board or not within the district, is, is accessible?
Sure. What it will also show in the back of the booklet, it will show, um, or the back of the end of the webpage, it will show all the different towns and all the different services that we provide that they avail themselves to. Now, not every town will avail themselves to all of our services. But what we look at is the students, where the students come from, where the clients come from to discern which towns are involved in different activities that we provide.
That's, going back to that surplus, um, just because I, I come from a regional school district environment prior to coming to Wallingford, and one of the things that we would do in the regional school district is if there was a surplus, it would be a rebate back to the districts that were participating. And I understand that that might not be feasible based on your line items, but you probably do have some transfer authority within some of them to do some of that. But what might be a business option or a business venture would be by at least crediting districts, um, opportunities within the organization or valued from the organization that then would seed future opportunities. So for example, if each of your district, depending on how much they, the percentage that they put in on a revenue basis to ACES, is then granted a percentage rebate back that could be used towards professional development, that amount would not necessarily cover total professional development necessitated by that district, so it would end up being a revenue-making opportunity because I might not come to you otherwise. If I have a $25,000 credit, I'm going to use the credit and I might need to spend another $10,000, which you would have never had if you didn't give me the $25,000 rather than just sitting on the, the, um, the surplus, so.
You should talk to Leslie.
Probably. So, um, but I mean, because that's just, again, if you're trying to generate funds where you don't have funds or relationships or restart relationships where they're no longer, you want, need to seed those relationships and those funds with something to be a, a conversation starter.
Right.
And I think that's, that's the challenge that, you know, we see, and, um, you know, I, I think that it is difficult when you are part of a consortium, and I know I had emailed you and I know you kind of responded probably thinking I was crazy, but if you're cutting nine school days at WHIMS, I don't see why our, our tuition wouldn't go down.
Yeah.
Our students are going less days. In any other private school setting, if you cut the number of days, there is somewhat of a, a rebate to the school district. So, you know, nine school days is a lot, it's not one day.
Right.
That's a tremendous amount of reduction in services to our students, so I thought we might see a reduction in the tuition, but I was, it was responding, no.
Or credit, or, I like the credit, even a credit idea.
Yeah, I, just, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not.
So what's, what's happened at WHIMS in the, in the latest teacher negotiation, the, the calendar for Wintergreen is nine days shorter. The savings to ACES is 220,000. The problem there and what prompted this proposal with the, the union was the 6% reduction from the state is actually $700,000 this year. The commissioner said, expect another 6% next year, so it'll be another 700,000 next year, so that's 1.4 million from the one school. So the 220, while it's, that's a, you know, sizable sum, it pales in comparison to the overall budget, you know, reduction.
So the salary increases for those teachers in the first year was about a 9% because they're going nine less days, so it has to be at least a 9 to 12% increase in the first year of that contract for those teachers, because on average, a teacher makes about $350 to $400 a day. You have to have at least 40 teachers in that school, so that's $16,000 a day. So if you take that, you, you know, that brings you up to your amount of money that you have, and that, that would be about a 9% increase, plus whatever they got for a general wage increase, which I'm, I'm hoping you're going to say that they got a zero.
The general wage was one and a half for teachers at max, the other teachers went up a step if they were not max.
And how much was the step worth?
Uh, 2.4.
So those teachers, that contract was valued at probably about 12% in the first year for those teachers? Because if you lose nine days, plus the two and a quarter or whatever it is percent, that's a tremen-.
Right.
That's a lot, wow.
So the, the 6% reduction from the state is a lot too, that's 700,000.
No, but I, I understand that, but what did the teachers give? I mean, what did the, our teachers, I, I, I feel are, and I'm sure all teachers are collaborative, but I just, that's, that's a tremendous increase. I, I just, because I, I figured as much, I mean, obviously it's the only way you can make it work. I mean, we reduced a teaching day too, so we understand that. That factors into what we're, we all, we all understand that, but nine days was just, when I factored in and then there's no reduction in tuition, that was a little bit, and I understand, you're faced with a lot different challenges than we are, but it just.
Back to the benevolent work, so Wintergreen has been about a $450,000 deficit for several years that ACES has picked up for, you know, of, an extended period, which we can no longer do. Between the state cuts and picking up the pieces at a place like Wintergreen, it's, it's difficult.
No, it's interesting, I, I just, I, again, I, I just, it was shocking when we hear nine days, and I know that was one of the characteristics that was, um, was a sale point initially when Wintergreen, Wintergreen became available to parents. So you had a, a longer school year, now it's a shorter school year than the local district.
The day is still longer.
Well, and also all-day kindergarten, which is no longer.
So I think that's the challenge that we're, I mean, to be honest, that's a challenge we're having, um, fail, filling the positions at Wintergreen, as you stated, we had 51. We're not looking to fill more than 55 next year as a district financially, um, and, because that's our average of our last three years, uh, which we're allowed under statute to drop to that.
Right.
So, um, I don't know if we're going to fill those because I think that that was a big, you know, figure that's, that's nine days of childcare.
Yeah.
So if you figure that, you know, an average childcare, even if it's, you know, $200 a day, um, which is, is reasonable, um, that's still, that's a tremendous amount of money, it's 1,800 bucks in a family, and if they have multiple children.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I just, I, I guess I, I understand financially the challenges you're faced with, and I think that that's, it's good that it's coming out, but I, I think that the, I, I, what did the teachers get in the second year of the contract?
Uh, at max, one and a half and this, a step.
So that the, again, the people got about a two, whatever.
Right.
So a little over a two. And then insurance, what, I don't, I'm.
Insurance, we went to, they, teachers have had HSA.
Or deductible.
Last cycle, and the deductible went to 2,000, 4,000. It had been 1,500, 3,000.
Oh, okay, so yours was less than ours to begin with, and then what is the, what is the contribution?
17, 17 and a half percent.
So it's lower than ours too? And then what is the contribution for the deductible? Any contribution on the part of ACES?
50%.
So it's still 50%?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so the plan, Kathy, I got to get you back on that committee, uh, negotiations, because our insurance increase is 1% this year.
Okay.
So, um, which is obviously why we wouldn't join a consortium.
Right.
Right.
Because we would actually pay more.
You can actually keep your plan.
Yeah.
It would just be.
Yeah, we'd be pulling our, yeah. Interesting.
All right. Any other questions?
What is the class size at Wintergreen? Because I couldn't find.
Um, kindergarten through third is 22, and I believe, uh, fourth to eighth is 24.
So our class sizes are smaller?
Class sizes are lower too.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the little, uh, you know, lower grades are packed.
Yeah.
And they should be 18, you know.
Right, that's what we strive for, yeah.
We just, actually, the board will.
We're pretty.
They're going to be getting an updated enrollment, we're going up at our elementary schools, so we have to actually add two, three, five teachers next year based on our latest data.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's a piece, and our middle schools are high, uh, and we have to try to mitigate that scenario because we do have a bubble class that I have to mitigate, so. What was? No, sorry.
So are you looking to get, um, like your overall plan is pretty, to me, it, you're flying at a pretty high level, um, in terms of what you outlined. When does, when do you look to internally create some greater specificity in terms of timelines, direction, pro, you know, what, how, how does the rubber hit the road for you guys?
Once.
I, I don't feel like I got any of that.
Okay. Once the platforms are fully established, then there's people working in those, and platforms, and I'm expecting over the summer, we have more data on where are we with these, you know, different initiatives in each of the different six bold steps.
So this summer?
Yeah.
Okay. So what, so.
We come back in the fall and.
So what are you, what are you doing between now and, I, I guess I'm confused by that, between now and the summer?
So establishing the, the platforms, so we've posted, we've interviewed, we're going to fill the, the two positions that we're missing.
Right.
In this, in this process. We have a retirement for the person, the director for schools is retiring, posting that position.
Okay.
So it's about filling our platforms to get to the next level of the six bold.
So until you fill those positions, you really, yeah, you're kind of, you, those, those are the roles of those individuals, is to get you.
We're, we're working on, um, projects in spite, in lieu of not having those positions.
Right, which is challenging. That's challenging. So when are you looking to hire?
Uh, so the second interview for the two platforms is next Friday.
Okay.
So it should be soon. I don't know the, the exact date.
So, so you figure like in the next month?
Yeah.
Roughly, roughly.
Right.
Hopefully you find the right candidates for your positions, but roughly in the next 30 days or 40 days, say. So those, that, those individuals will spend, I guess, the next, so let's say they start, you know, roughly March-ish, April, you know, they're going to spend, putting in the, I guess, the meat to the bones? I don't know, I'm still, I'm still confused by that.
The details. So, um, we'll also get our response for international programming. We should get our response from the State Department.
Gotcha.
Within the next several weeks, whether we can accept the students. It's been a, it's usually a six-month hold in that process. In Washington, things are different today, so hopefully there won't be further delay around that.
Yeah, well, those, yeah, you have no control over those kinds of things, that's understandable. Thanks.
So with these changes, and you're integrating some of these things together, will we no longer see separate budgets for each school? Will that change? Will that change?
So the budget process is the same. You might see different budgets for different work, but the, so we've had a history of.
But for the schools themselves, will still see the?
Yeah, you're going to see them this Thursday.
Right. I already read that packet.
Right.
And I already have my questions for that, but are you, so that will remain the same? Those budgets will stay constituted in the same way?
Yes.